Good morning. I've got 10 o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, August 12th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present, and I'd like to welcome and thank all of you for being here this morning. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
First item is the minutes, but I don't think we have those. Moved and seconded to table. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Next is the claims, Mr. Pettis. Moved and seconded, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Before we start with our report, is there anyone that wants to come before the court that needs to leave early? We'll go ahead and go down the agenda. First item is the gas department. Ms. Tralbertis.
Morning Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
My report is in your package. There's not much I want to add to it. Just want to go over the state finish that's audited. It's mentioned on the report, but they were here while I was writing it, so we didn't have anything on the audit. It's an annual audit of the whole system, and we came out really doing very well. Usually, our problem area is the field, but since we've almost converted everything that was a problem, the steel lines and all that has been converted, they didn't find very many problems, and none at all, actually. So, we're good to go with that. However, they did mention DIMP, it's the Integrity Management Program, is the one that deals with the line replacement. And we're due, under that program, we're due to replace 7,500 feet a year of old PVC or plastic pipe. We still have 44 miles of it left in the system, so, right, I know it's budget time, so I thought I'd bring it up.
Yeah, and I did leave some money in the budget.
That's where we were at. Any questions?
The proposed budget.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tralbertis. I do want to commend you that the last two months, we've had 3% loss, which is very Transfer station. Okay, I guess you all have it with you. I just look at the money, and I notice we have a deficit of $4,500 in the transfer station. But, I guess you all can look at it, and if you all have any questions, they can be directed to Ms. Guerra. Tax collector, Ms. Alinas.
Good morning Judge, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
The report is in front of you. This is my report for July. The total countywide collections for July 19 were $523,050, $57 cents. In July 2018, there were $492,810.23. There was a total collection of $30,240.34 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $385,360.30 less than last year. Since 2018, taxes became delinquent as of July. The first total year-to-date current collections for Starr County entities remained $13,491,400.80. This year, the tax office collected $51,880.48 more than last year. Our total delinquent collections for July 19, just for Starr County, were $333,853.47. Total delinquent collections in July 2018 were $317,104.81. There was a total delinquent collection of $16,748.66 more than last year. Year-to-date, we have collected $314,427.78 less than last year. As of June 30, 2019, there was a total of $402,401.20 as projected current taxes to be collected. In July, the tax office collected $127,950.68 of 2018 taxes that turned delinquent July 1st, 2019. That leaves $274,485.52 projected 2018 taxes to be collected. We're at the 98% as of July, of the collections as of July 31, 2019.
The 274, Ms. Alinas, is that, is that regular taxes, or delinquent, or both?
As of July, everything becomes a delinquent, sir.
Okay. Yeah, but the 274 there at the bottom, is that the total? I'm sorry?
Just 274.
Okay, but total taxes, delinquent and current taxes? Just current? Okay, that's pretty good, yeah. Okay, any other question, comment? Thank you, Ms. Alinas.
Thank you.
County clerk, Mr. Gonzalez.
Morning Judge, Commissioners. Reports in your packet for the month of July. Just going to kind of tell you, we had 2,263 new filings, and our total due to the treasurer was $30,179.50. I don't want to go over each one of these things. We had a couple of concerns that came out through the treasurer's office with regards to, a couple of months ago, you asked me about the preservation fee. We did find out where that problem is. There hasn't been any collections being done through the probate courts, so we've already figured that out with Annabelle and with Idocket. We are currently fixing that. I will bring it to Commissioners' Court in the next one, because our fees will be going up, because there's some fees that we're not, they haven't been charging the past couple of years. The money is there, Judge, it's just a matter of allocating it and moving it to where it needs to go.
So, they were collecting, but they weren't allocating to the...
That's correct.
Okay.
So, which is, the Building Maintenance Preservation Fund for the courthouse is there, with $20 per filing fee. So, now, we're going to bring it back to Commissioners' Court to go forward, starting September 1st, and fix that issue.
Do you know ballpark, how much that is?
Total in the account, Judge, is about $88,000. So, we need to figure out how many filings have come between, I believe it's 2015 to now, is what has been collected and hasn't been allocated.
But the courthouse preservation, I think that was...
It was 2018.
Eighteen, yeah.
Yes, 2018. So, for the preservation, it'd be 2018, but we still have, there's other ones that are, that go there for, you know, all these different things that we still have to send up to the state. So, that's something that we're working on. It was brought up to my attention from the treasurer's office while she was working with Idocket, and it's something that we are diligently working to fix, and we will take care of it as soon as possible. One more thing with experience, with the help of the elections office, we're pretty much ready to go with that, where we can start sending out those notices for the filings that we're holding for Las Lomas in that area. We started sending some out, but they started returning back to us, because, you know, this is about 150 filings that haven't been done. We want to make sure we do them correctly the first time. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Tralbertis. Sheriff's Department.
Good morning, Your Honor, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The projected revenues for the month of July 2019. We have a collection for Rio Grande City Police Department of $570, and the Roma Police Department, $180. Jail Solutions, $1,500. The United States Marshal Services, Transportation Services, this is our transport, we're going back and forth, is $10,097. Medical Transport, $300. The U.S. Marshal Services for housing inmates, $144,375. Idaho County Sheriff's Office, $133, with $704, for a total of $290,728. This is $40,098 more than the same time last year. Year-to-date, we have projected collections is $2557,318. The increase from last year to this year, so far, is $219,043. The federal inmate count on August 5th was 93 federal inmates, 80 inmates for Idaho County, and 78 state inmates for Starr County. The average monthly was 84 inmates, and Idaho County was 79. We're at 99.12% projected collected for the projected revenues for 2018.
We've got two more months.
We've got two more months to go. And as of Tuesday of last week, Idaho County in court did pass the increase from $54 to $60 a day per inmate. So, that's a projected increase of $15,000 to $16,000 monthly for next month. That went into effect last Tuesday.
Based on what you're telling here, you have an overall collection of the projected about half a million dollars?
That is correct.
That is correct.
Or maybe 600,000.
About 600,000, more or less.
Yeah, 500,000.
If you're in the center of me, that's fine, you know.
More or less, because we're at 290 this month. We're at 290s, and we're expecting another 15,000 to 16,000 more for next month.
Yeah, we need to understand that, even though we have...
Yes.
And by the way, before I say what I'm going to say, I do want to thank especially you, Chief, and of course, everyone that's involved. This is record-breaking, you know, the amount of money that's coming in from the jail, and it's been, because of a lot of things, our prosecutors are...
That is correct.
Are doing their job, our judges are also helping out, and of course, you and the sheriff negotiating this contracts. So, we really thank you for that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Really, really helping us.
You know, it's a good relationship between the sheriff and Sheriff Guerra, the marshal services, everybody's pulling through. They are constantly, daily asking for more beds, you know, but we're keeping the job 100% to where we can keep it, to, we try and keep 15 to 20 beds open, for just in case the weekend gets out of hand.
Yeah, and you know the...
They're paying a good money.
The comment I was going to make, and certainly not bust the balloon, but...
Of course.
Because of the additional revenues that are coming in, the 500, 600,000, that is absolutely great, however, it's not all profit.
That is correct.
We have more prisoners, more food, more guards, more...
That is correct, yes, sir.
You know, because of that, so, yes, we have a bigger profit, but it's not half a million.
That is correct. We've had to make more expenditures because of the two upkeep of the jail, you know, two upkeep of the jail and services that are needed for the inmates. For example, this weekend, we had five inmates at the hospital, you know, chest pains, stuff like that, so, we did have over, we had over 10 guards that were tied up at either McCalla Medical, Renaissance, at Starr County, you know, throughout Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so...
And the reason I'm saying that, in the proposed budget, we have a budget workshop tomorrow, there are some additional people being proposed.
And that's also going to work out, Judge, because as of September 1st, the commission did change, the legislation changed to where now, we no longer have a year to send our new hires, guards, to the jailer academy. Now, they require that they be enrolled in the academy within 90 days. So, pretty much, we're going to be out, we're going to be out three to four guards all the time in training, which is, the academy's running six weeks in Idaho County. It went, it used to be where it was, we had 12 months to send it to the jailer academy, now it's 90 days.
Maybe we wouldn't have considered paying the more who we can retain?
That's certainly, that's certainly an option that...
The overtime, the overtime by the marshals has retained, has made a big change at the jail. We don't have, for example, this period, we don't have to hire anybody. We did see retention with the overtime that was provided by the marshal services.
Again, Chief, thank you so much. Congratulations. International Bridge.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. This is the report for July 2019. We have a total revenue from traffic, $177,119 with 50 cents, and we show a decrease of $16,936.50 for the month of July 2019 compared to the month of July 2018. And we show an increase of $215 on collections for the month of July 2019 compared to the month of June 2019. We have other collections of $45.19, and we have the grand total collections for $177,164.69. Do you have any questions, sir?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Treasurer, Mr. Gonzalez.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning.
You have my report for the month of July 2019 in front of you. If you could just follow along with me. The ending balance for the total, for the general fund is at $2,828,708 with 89 cents. At this time last year, it was at $1,443,643 with 47 cents, which is a difference of $1,385.65 with 42 cents more so than last year. On the Roden Bridge, we have an ending balance of $306,678.82. At this time last year, it was at $375,288 with 99 cents, for a difference of $68,610.17 less than last year. On the enterprise funds, we have an ending balance of $744,779 with 88 cents. In 2018, it was at $1,019,052 with 31 cents, for a difference of $274,272.43 less than last year. In the drainage district, we have an ending balance of $976,550 with 50 cents. In 2018, it was at $690,240 with 73 cents. The difference is $286,309 with 77 cents more so than last year. And the bottom line for the grand total, we have an ending balance for this year as of July, it's at $4,856,718 with 9 cents. In 2018, it was at $3,528,225 with 10 cents, and that would be a difference of $1,328,492.59 more than at this time last year. Are there any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. Auditor, Mr. Pettis.
Morning Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
You've got a copy of my report in your packet. This is a county auditor summary report for the month of July 2019. On page 1, Part 1 reflects the reconciled balances of the general fund at $2,805,691.5. The Roden Bridge Fund at $286,540 with 81 cents, and the payroll clearing fund at $1,017,197.58. Part 2 reflects the expenditure report for the general fund as of July 31, 2019, as a percentage of the year elapsed. As of July 31, 2019, 304 days have elapsed, or 83.29%. In summary, the general fund amount expended year-to-date is $15,274,966, or 82.63%. That's slightly below the 83.29%. A breakdown of several of the departments are reflected at the bottom of page 1 and continue through page 2. On page 3, Part 3 reflects the expenditure report for the Roden Bridge Fund, again as of July 31, 2019. The Roden Bridge Fund amount expended year-to-date is $4,425,441, or 71.34%, falling below the 83.29% of the year elapsed. Below that, you can see a breakdown of the numbers of some of the departments within the Roden Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page 3 and continue through page 4, we have a year-to-date summary of the revenue reports for the general fund and the Roden Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are $16,153,490, or 87.35%, and $5,353,192, or 86.3%, respectively. Page 5 reflects a summary of the revenues and expenses for the enterprise funds as of July 31, 2019. The International Bridge reflects revenues of $1,997,416, with expenditures of $1,637,524. It's an excess of $359,892. The gas operating system reflects year-to-date revenues of $897,940, with expenditures of $770,474, an excess of $127,466. And finally, the solid waste transfer station reflects year-to-date revenues of $1,159,364, with expenditures of $1,288,221, a deficit of $128,857. Page 6 reflects a summary of the debt owed as of July 31, 2019, the total current balance being $2,120,368. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettis. I have my report. Item number 6 is to approve the new vendors list. Mr. Pettis? Second motion. I have a motion, a second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 7 is an action item, and this is to accept a letter of resignation from Constable Precing Ford, Javier Vela. I did receive that letter, and it's on file. I have a motion, a second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item made is to approve an appointment for the new Constable Precing Ford.
Judge, I'd like to make the motion to appoint a new Constable. His name is Joel Rochez. He's present right here.
I second your honor. I have a motion, and it's to appoint Mr. Joel Rochez as our new, to be appointed as the new Constable for Precing Ford. Excellent, excellent. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. We'll welcome aboard to our Starr County family. You know, it's certainly a pleasure to have you onboard, and, you know, we're ready to work with you. Okay, would you like to stay through the whole meeting and have the swearing-in afterwards, or...
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Item... Item 9 is an action item, and this is a final approval of Las Norias, page 5, I guess, at Rancho Santo Domingo. Mr. Garcia had a death in his family, but he did call me to assure me that everything was in place. I think this is...
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and seconded to approve, discussion.
Are they getting permits to build those towers that they, they building an AT&amp;T tower? Do they come here and get a permit?
They should be getting a permit, and we charge them a fee, unfortunately, your sir is not here, but...
They kind of ruined up this, they went in and placed all their equipment in the road there, the county road, and they sure messed up the road there and everything. Right here, here, Montalvo Hill.
Yes, heavy equipment.
They were working there, they had all the equipment, the cranes, and they were putting together that up right on the road, they built a block that people couldn't go into, parked in their own house. They had to stay outside for the whole week.
Let me, again, I don't know, Commissioner, because Mr. Garcia's not here, but I'll find out, and I don't think they're finished yet.
No, they're not already finished, but I already went and talked to them, said, "You guys need to repair this road," you know, but it was kind of, you know, because they just sat on top, right on the road, all night, they left the cranes, they got all the, the people couldn't park in there, and they had, there was a lady that has a handicapped baby, and they were wondering how they're going, the ambulance is going to get there, so, what can I do, I mean?
Well, you know, if it's a county road...
They got through with the crane, they were, thank God, nothing happened.
Okay, we do have the right to go in there and ask them to move. The sheriff or constable or someone can go out there and move them, but I'll find out.
But they're already done, they're already done, you know, they're just, they're working on the cables and building a little room that they built there. That's all they got left.
Okay, we'll follow, we'll follow up on it. Did I call for the move?
No, you didn't call for it.
All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 10 is to approve a lease payment from EcoSite in the amount of $1,000. Moved and seconded to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 11 is an action item, and this is to approve a resolution for an inter-local agreement between Texas Department of Motor Vehicle and the County of Starr, Ms. Alinas.
The last official report, the statement was approved, and I just want to pass the decisions for the resolution, for everybody's signs, so I can send it back to the state.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and seconded to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item 12, at this moment, I will pass the meeting on to Commissioner Garcia, because I do have a conflict with item 12, so Commissioner, take over, please.
Item 12 is discussing possible action on road use agreement for Starr Silver Farm LLC.
Good morning, Your Honor, good morning Commissioners. As you're aware, the majority of the agreements that we've entered with any of the energy companies require that they sign a road use agreement that in essence allows you to ensure that any roadway, county roadway that is utilized during the construction or maintenance of the project is maintained or returned to the county in the condition that it was found. So, in other words, they'll ensure that if there's issues with any damage to roadways for the period of the construction and while their maintenance, at this point, we expect this is going to be a pretty long-term agreement, so that's why we remove this from the abatement agreement. And so, we have already an agreement that is ready to get final legal review, and so we came to the Commissioners' Court for your approval, and we will, if we need to bring it back to you with any changes, we will, we're asking for your approval contingent on a final legal review. The document does not deviate much from the ones you previously have, and this focused specifically on any road, but more particularly on Loma Blanca Road.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
If they move by Commissioner's signs, or by Commissioner's opinion, taken by Commissioner Rodriguez? Any discussion? If not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
What opposed, same time? Motion carries. Judge, I return to the court.
Thank you. Let the record show I did not participate or discuss it.
Okay, yes, let the record show that the judge did not participate in this. Any discussion or anything on this one?
Item 13 is an action item, and this is to approve a proclamation proclaiming August 11 through 17 as American Wind Week in Starr County roads.
Yes, good morning again. You know, Spock, speaking about renewable energy projects, in your packet, you'll actually find a copy of the proclamation, but you're also going to find a printout that we are going to circulate in social media and in any other format that we have to. We want to remind everyone that as we're working on these renewable energy projects, they're obviously infusing a lot of dollars into property landowners, but more importantly, what this is doing is also creating an offset for any mineral losses that you may see on your praise values, and more significantly, playing a role in improving the revenues that are coming into your daily operations. And so, we wanted just to give you a quick overview, that in the years between 2013, when we signed the first abatement agreement with Duke Energy for Los Bientos, to 2018, there has been 1.2... Bientos, to two thousand eighteen, there has been one point two billion dollars worth of investment that has come into the county. Of that, eight hundred and thirty million are complete projects, uh, four hundred and ten million of that is under construction as we speak, and two hundred and seventy million dollars are, um, are prospects that we're dealing with in the last couple of weeks, so we expect to bring, uh, some additional agreements, uh, for consideration to the court. Uh, finally, we have about fifty million dollars that are in pre-development, meaning that construction, uh, for the, uh, those projects are imminent. Uh, so we bring this to you today to, to remind everyone that wind plays a significant role in, in, in giving back to this community, but these kind of projects would not be viable or would not make us competitive if we didn't have a Commissioners' Court and County Judge that was, uh, business-oriented and business-minded in allowing us to put together incentive packages that allows us to recruit these companies. And so, uh, we're competing now with, uh, a variety of counties throughout the entire border. Uh, Starr County continues to be a cornerstone of, um, good, uh, wind energy potential. Uh, we believe, uh, based on conversations that we have here in, in the last four to five weeks, uh, that we expect probably a handful of projects, uh, coming in either before the end of twenty nineteen or, or very early twenty twenty, uh, in order to, uh, to consider new development, uh, in this community. And so, uh, we've got, uh, we've done a couple of things with American Wind Week. I know the judge wrote an op-ed that was circulated through national media, and so what today, uh, they've asked us, uh, throughout the country, they're celebrating, uh, National Wind Week, and so we're hopeful that, um, today, uh, we come before you, uh, for approval of a resolution that proclaims August eleventh through seventeenth as American Wind Week, and I'll read this very quickly. Uh, whereas Texas hosts nearly twenty-five thousand megawatts of wind power, ranking first in the nation, and producing enough electricity to power seven point three million averages, average homes, whereas Texas is home to a hundred and forty-three wind farms and forty-six wind-related manufacturing, uh, facilities, whereas wind farms in Texas have attracted over forty-six point five billion in private investment to date, whereas wind farm generates two hundred and thirty-seven million in state and local taxes and more than seventy million in land lease payments each year, and whereas wind power opportunity for twenty, uh, gives employment opportunity for over twenty-five thousand men and women, uh, we now therefore, the Starr County Commissioners' Court hereby proclaim August eleventh through seventeenth, American Wind Week in Starr County, and encourage the residents of our county to learn about and celebrate wind energy. And so from our standpoint, this is an opportunity to remind everyone that wind continues to be a thriving, uh, industry in our community, but more importantly, uh, that the opportunities are endless, and, and with your help, uh, and with your leadership, we believe, uh, that we will be able to potentially, um, uh, get close to about, uh, three billion dollars before all this is said and done.
Is there a motion, Your Honor? Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Rose, and I do wanna thank you and the Industrial Foundation, uh, because you all are a critical part of all this development, uh, for informational. The Industrial Foundation, Rose, is the one that negotiates pretty much all these contracts that we have, and then of course, the court tweaks it at the end, and, and we have the final approval, but a lot of the legwork is, is being done by them, so we thank you for that, Rose.
Oh, we appreciate, uh, Judge, I know you've got a, a long agenda, but if we could just have a quick photo, uh, we've promised American Wind, we would send them something, uh, from the Commissioners' Court that included a photo.
Okay. You want it down there, or we stay up here?
Well, if you stand up there, I, I know that, uh, we, we have, uh, members of the Industrial Foundation, uh, here with us that we'd like to invite to, uh, take the photo, and any elected official that would like to join us as well. Uh, we have, uh, Mr. Alberto Perez and Mr. Gilbert Milan from the city of Rio Grande, and, uh, one of the reasons that, um, uh, they're joining us today is obviously they're a great partner with our economic development efforts, and, uh, one of the things that they will validate for us is that while wind projects are going on, the city obviously, uh, has the benefit of hotel occupancy taxes, um, uh, increased sales tax, and, and I know we didn't talk a lot about that, but the indirect, uh, benefits, uh, far exceed just direct revenue coming to the city, uh, and so they're joining us today, uh, in solidarity to show that, uh, these kind of projects, um, are a benefit for, for all of our municipalities and our entire county.
Sure.
So we're, we're gonna...
I think they want a superior.
And then, uh, and then we pay each other, yeah.
What are we gonna say, wait?
One, two, three.
Thank you, that concludes our...
Okay. Uh, next item is, uh, an action item, and this is to approve the rating sheets. Uh, Rio Delta Engineering has the highest, uh, score in the engineering firms, muddy?
That is correct, Judge, the package is before you. Uh, we do ask your recommendation, uh, to select Rio Delta as the highest, uh, scoring engineering firm.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Uh, item fifteen is, uh, I guess along the same lines, and this is to approve a contract between Starr County and Rio Delta for engineering services to prepare all preliminary and final, uh, design plan specs and conduct all necessary, uh, items needed with, uh, CDBG for the Colonial Fund, nineteen-twenty Colonial Fund.
That is correct.
Moved and second to approve.
When we, when are we gonna find out, when we submit it, we qualify?
Uh, the application is due September the thirteenth, and usually it's about two months after that that we get notified.
However, you know, let, let me, uh, state that, that the audit, I think we're close to getting it done, you know? That needs to be in before they can even consider our application, so...
When it, is it supposed to be on time or not?
Uh, we're, we're a little behind, but I think it's only, we should be done this month, right? Okay, when, when's the application due?
September the thirteenth. It has to be in August, by September the thirteenth, by May.
Okay, so we're, we're under the gun. Okay. Yeah. Uh, I do have a motion, a second, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is an action item, and this is to approve the order of election for the twenty nineteen constitutional amendment election, John.
Morning, Judge, good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Yes, just, uh, the order of election for the November amendments election and November the fifth.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries, and then also, item seventeen is to approve the consolidation of precincts for the November fifth constitutional amendment election. You wanna deliberate on that?
Yeah, by now we can, uh, like, we're on there a hundred percent, a hundred, uh, um, population of Starr County, so we're, I guess, we're excited to consolidate our precincts on early voting in Election Day, and it helps the county to save some money there.
And what, what's being recommended is early vote, uh, for all ten precincts would be here at the courthouse, uh, and then on Election Day, we, we must have one precinct per precinct, so it's La Rosita Community Center, Roma Community Center, El Seniso, and the courthouse. That's, that's what we're gonna be voting on.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thank you. Item eighteen is to, uh, approve the opening of a new bank account at Long Star National Bank for the, for our insurance plan. Uh, we discussed this before, we need, uh, we're going self-funding, so we need, uh, special account for that.
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items nineteen through thirty-three are budget amendments, Mr. Peters?
Uh, yes, those have all been reviewed and have the...
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve items nineteen through thirty-three, which are budget amendments. Discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Items thirty-four and thirty-five are budget corrections, are those in order?
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. It is ten forty-five, and pursuant to section five-five-one point oh-seven-four and five-five-one point oh-seven-one, we'll go into executive session to discuss order of salaries, uh, personnel manual, amendment number eight, on compensation, work schedule, work week, et cetera, and, uh, to consult with Attorney Judge, uh, Orlando Rodriguez, who'll be out shortly. It's, uh, eleven forty-five, and we're back in open session. First thing we discussed was order of salaries. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve order of salaries as presented, discussion. All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The next thing we, uh, discussed was personnel manual and policy changes for, uh, compensation of overtime and law enforcement.
Second, Your Honor.
Moved and second to approve the changes as presented. Uh, any further discussion? All in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then, uh, the last one was consulting with our Judge, uh, Rodriguez, and I think that was more informational than, than anything, no action needed on that one. Anything else? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Take it, Your Honor.
Moved and second, all in fair, please, aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.